Okay, tonight on our first public hearing, we have a proposed endorsement of an application by Scenic Land Company LLC to participate in the Georgia Tourism Development Act Sales and Use Rebate Program. So we have several members here tonight from this group. And we're gonna give you all the floor and let you all speak. And I see you all got a video presentation, so Dwayne Horton, I guess you're up.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Appreciate the opportunity to share this. So the state of... Many of you will share a little bit more about the Macklemore project in a minute, but I do want to share what tonight is about. The state of Georgia has a statewide incentive that they will rebate the sales tax credit, not the county portion, but just the state portion, back to projects that qualify. And that's all over the state that they offer that. So this is a way to help encourage economic development. They see tourism as something that is a great way to grow economic development because people come, they spend money, and they leave with this. Also, one thing that's really nice about this project with Macklemore is it's on a state highway, so there's not really any infrastructure needs beyond what already exists to move this forward. But in order for this to move forward, the county commissioner Whitfield would sign this road lotion, saying that this is something they would like for the state to support. But on Macklemore, I want to give everybody an update on the project. We have a few slides to go through. We... Since we initially started on the project, we've already done redesign on the golf course. I'll share more on that later. We started work on our clubhouse now. We've also built a short course. There's a model home that's existing by Arthur Rittenberg Homes. It's the largest luxury home builder in the country. We have multiple homes that we're looking at people to start building. And the real value for Macklemore to Walker County... And if I didn't share this, I'm originally from Walker County, born and raised here as well. But the big benefit to Walker County is this was an asset that before we got involved, people were giving property back to the county and not even paying taxes up there. Now there's... Property values are starting to increase. More people are paying. Correctly, everybody's starting to pay that now, holding onto the value. And every time a home's built up there, you know, this isn't something that adds to the school base. These are second home or retired home type community. So it's not adding to the school base. It's not adding really to services, necessary services. So this is a way that if everything goes well, it was on the tax digest for around $18 million, and it's projected to grow to $500 million to $600 million without the county putting any upfront money. We just need all the support that we can get to help with state and other assistance as well to move this forward. So this is our 18th hole. It really is. We were trying to get... If you mind if I may hit some lights.
Yeah.
So this is our 18th hole at Macklemore. It's right on the eastern brow of Lookout Mountain, overlooking Macklemore Cove. We get our name from Macklemore Cove below this. It is a spectacular hole. People are traveling from all over the country to come visit it. We've also been nominated... The nomination's been accepted by Golf Digest for this course to be the best new course in the entire country. And now we're up against some stiff competition, but we're very excited about the opportunity to compete and bring something, not just to Georgia with all the other great courses, but to Walker County as well. These are some other images. This is also from the 18th hole with cloud coverage below. Keep going. Another image of the 18th hole. On the other side of the road, now this is actually in Day County. We do have some property in Day County, but we're the only property owner on Lookout Mountain that owns from one side of the mountain all the way to the other side of the mountain. This is a waterfall that we own to each side of it. We don't technically own the waterfall, but we do have access rights into it. So to have that view, that the reason the state of Georgia is really interested in this site is because of its proximity to other markets to be able to bring revenue from these other cities. There are nearly 14 million people within a two-hour drive, 28 Fortune 500 companies. There are... This is the only place in the entire southeast that has that kind of density within a two-hour drive, and one of the few places in the entire country. Direct flights to Chattanooga. These are just some of the amenities and all the things you can do. Run through this quicker. Parks and protected... The other thing is we have all this protected land, and there's no way to really generate revenue. So with people having this asset, it's a way that people can come in, stay, access this land, and be able to generate revenue on something that's otherwise really a cost, whether it's a cost to the county, it's a cost to the state. And so it really is a return on the investments that have already been made on this protected property and being able to utilize it as well. There's already onsite infrastructure in place, the fiber optic internet, water. Here's a water tower up there that Day County put in. Sewer service is already there. State highway access and entrance. We're working on funding a fire station EMT service ourselves that would happen by the time the hotel opened as well, which would be the next phase, and then other work too. All the accolades that many of you know go into the area. This is our clubhouse. It's under construction, be overlooking that, and six old short courses. So this is already under construction and moving forward as well. This is over an $8 million project, just on the clubhouse and the surrounding assets there that we're making investment on. So this is the current rendering of the hotel. This is what we're planning to move forward with right now. This is the entrance side. We have another entrance of the other side. So it's not right on the brow. It is pulled back a little bit with views, overlooking that and the many areas. So the planned hotel and conference center, 245 rooms and over 15,000 square feet of meeting space as well for conference to be able to come in. Floor plans, keep going. Keep going. And then just some images. Keep going. These are just images of the course. If anybody wants to see these, we can show you more afterwards. But it really is an amazing... Every hole's different. The designers that put this together, it's real... They really made a destination out of this with the natural beauty of the land that you have and then the work that they did on the course. The hotel would be flagged by Hilton, has already visited, has already signed and executed franchise agreements, so it would be a Hilton Curio collection. They do not have another property like this in the southeast that's not on a beach, so Hilton themselves will be directing marketing and direct business to this from their sponsors they already have as well. So... You have another video? Yeah, let's do the flyby. So I just showed you some... Just want to show you how far along we are in the hotel funding, I mean, plan at this point in time. They're gonna show you a flyby. Again, this one won't have all the color to it. It won't have the landscape, but it'll give you an idea of, you know, what we're putting into this, just on the model of the hotel itself. So while this is moving forward, the... So the hotel right now, we've been working to get the plan within the budget that worked for everything. BB&amp;T Capital Markets Group is doing the underwriting for the project. They've already finished preliminary underwriting and have gone to pre... They've successfully pre-marketed the sales of the bonds. The county is not issuing bonds, by the way. There's an outside authority from Wisconsin that's coming in to issue the bonds for the project. So that was the conference center. You saw this is the entrance. This is our signature kind of element, tower element. You have to see which this is an area for excursions. There'll be an exploration area here for people to come in and drop off, to go to different onsite excursions or offsite excursions to the different parks and areas that exist. The spa is down below this and opens up to this area here. So this is continuing to be in progress. My development partner, Scott Hunley, is here with us as well. He's really leading this effort with the design and instruction team to advance this to be able to, if everything goes well with the funding, to move the project forward first of the year. And so that move in the hotel was just as that got closer to the brow, we just wanted to drop that down, so you didn't have an obstruction as much and just sit there. And then the conference center pool would be out here where we discuss, restaurant. Kitchen would be on the main level, on the terrace level, and you'd come through and see all the way through. So I think that's good. And then if you'll give me just a few more minutes, we do have a video that we just launched that shares a little bit more and has all the other players involved on the project to give you an idea of the quality and execution that we really want for this project.
A place like Macklemore has more of a retreat from this kind of fast-paced urban and suburban living and coming up to a more pastoral and more natural and relaxed environment. You cannot create all of this. It has to be there, and that's what Macklemore has. It has a lot of beautiful places within the place that are natural, which is what Macklemore is all about.
This isn't just a golf course. The experience that I want the golfers to have is that they know that they're in a special place. This is more than just playing golf. This is a golf experience, and I think that's why players are gonna play here on a continuing basis.
It's different here at Macklemore. There's people that just come just to look at the land, just to see what the land offers and experience it. And then for us to put the game of golf in that experience, it really is more than just a game. It's a journey within a game.
The beauty that I find up here is how we've been able to integrate golf, which is green, pure, unobstructive, and we've been able to combine that into a rocky setting with distant vista views that you can just see forever.
First of all, it's such a stunning setting. This, I can't even imagine in a more comfortable setting.
To put in a full-scale golf experience that celebrates the natural areas, but is carved into the land in a way that it is just part of the character, it looks like it belongs here.
The views are phenomenal. I think to some degree, that's half the experience of playing golf, is being at a place where you just enjoy being there and just have views that calm you.
This course, what makes it special is it ebbs and flows between holes that you can score well and holes that will challenge you, and it moves great. And there's about an equal number.
I think the course is super fair. Actually, I played with my wife, Robyn. It's the first time she's ever played 18 holes. They were teeing off the number five or the ladies' tees, and a great experience. You know, I guess the thing for me is I'm ready to go back. I'm tired, but I'm ready to go right back out there and hit it again.
The design of this golf course makes this place so peaceful in that every hole is a separate hole. And I mean that by, we don't have a bunch of holes combined together. We don't have too many holes that parallel each other. It's like, once you get to a hole, it's off by itself. You don't see another group, and it just provides a very quiet setting.
The scenery is breathtaking. Number 18, the signature hole. It is absolutely magnificent, and people are gonna want to come play here.
The people that have played this course know how special it is.
It's amazing, and it's not gonna take much for people to see that.
So we have three types of holes here at Macklemore. Cliff holes are the three holes that kind of offer you the great vista views that run alongside the eastern brow of Lookout Mountain. Our canyon holes are kind of the middle of our course, and it kind of runs down through where you're gonna get the greatest elevation changes. And then our highland holes are back up on our plateau. Those will be kind of that Scottish feel where we have the natural areas, we have the tall grass, more of a flat kind of golf course. Beautiful in its own way, but clearly three distinct type of holes that really makes this place very unique.
There's so much more than golf, and Macklemore is much more than just golf. There's literally an unlimited amount of activities that someone can partake in to enjoy the natural environment and to escape. When you see Macklemore, it doesn't need anything more. It already has everything more than what we could even imagine. It's truly an island in the sky that is already just perfect the way it is.
So I do appreciate the opportunity. I didn't know we had opportunity to do anything. I know we work together.
I did have a couple of things I'd like to say. First, just to reiterate what Mr. Horton said regarding this application for incentives for all of fellow Walker County citizens, what's going on here is not... They are not applying for incentives from Walker County. The state has an incentive program for tourism, but the state is careful as they issue those incentives. And without the endorsement of the host county, they will not even look at the application. So I just want to make that part clear. They're not here asking us for anything. They're asking for us to help support them as they go get these state incentives that are already there, and it's competitive to get those. So we're all pulling for them to win that from the state. It's very important to us. And second of all, just thank the team. When Shannon and I did the town hall, some of you were there. You remember when this was first introduced? And Shannon and I both made the commitment that if these guys did... We believed they were straight shooters, but if they weren't, then we would react accordingly. And I just say 100% with no mitigating factors, these guys have done everything exactly like they said they would. And that's very important to proceed like that. And, you know, we told them from the beginning, we don't have any money. The county is not in a financial position to invest, as we said that night. Normally, a project like this, the county, the host county, and the private investors are sharing in a public-private partnership, usually on some kind of project like this. You all know, unfortunately, we are in no position to do that. We told them candidly upfront, we don't have any money, but we will support and cheerlead you to the finish line. And this is vital. This project is vital to our economic future. These are those sales tax dollars that replace the need for increased property taxes. It's so important. And if I may ask you, please go to their social media and share it and help us cheerlead this and get this thing across the finish line. It's free money to us, and it's important to our future. Thank you for that, Mike.
Anyone have any questions for Dwayne and his team here tonight?
What happened to Dwayne? For some reason, this project is not finished. As you said, this development there has got a real check and pack, to say the least. So let's just say that, you know, the hotel never gets...
I mean, you're talking about a lot of money, but the hotel, the whole lot. And what happens to this incentive thing if the development's never completed?
Go ahead. This incentive only kicks in if it is completed. So it's one of those that we only get sales tax back based on sales tax coming into that project from the state. Again, the county, I left this part out. The county portion of the sales tax alone that would come into this project is well over $1 million just in sales tax, not counting the property value of the surrounding residential area.
That's a great question, as he indicated. This program with the state is a rebate back after everything's up and running, and there's sales tax collected, and they're rebating back. A similar project that qualified for this same program, because this is a, what I refer to as an on-the-shelf program that the state has, that any economic development project can apply for. So this is not a special favor to this group or this team. This is something the state offers up to everyone. A very similar project that got this same type of program a few years ago is when Lake Wentworth Soca did their expansion and added the water park. They applied, and they were accepted, and they're part of the like-type program. So the state is looking for positive growth with tourism and people spending money and coming to Georgia, and so it's a win-win for everyone. So the state's very excited for people to apply and want this type of program because they know it's bringing growth to the community and it's gonna bring positive things. Any other questions? Okay, well, that will end our public hearing on that part tonight, so we'll end that session of our meeting. Then we will move into our next public meeting. We have some zoning out, some zoning things here, and then later in our meeting on our agenda, our regular scheduled meeting, we'll get into the resolutions and all that for this project. But we'll enter back into order. It's September... Well, let's go through this, and then we'll take a break. September 24th at 6:23 PM. We call this to order, the first public hearing that we have. Item number one is for the Johnsons' request to rezone from R2 to A1 for property located at 4660 Ringo Road, Lafette, Georgia, tax map 0333-001. We'll go ahead and combine this second one, because it's a separate partial, but it's adjoining. It's the same application process. The Johnsons' request to rezone from R2 to A1 for property located at 4660 Ringo Road, Lafette, Georgia, tax map 0-333-002. This is the second public hearing on this. The first public hearing was at the Planning Commission on the 19th of September, and this is the second meeting for this, for final decision. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of this zoning request? Anyone in opposition? Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone that would have a desire to come speak in favor of this request? Yes, sir. Come to the podium, please, if you would, and we ask you to state your name for the record and speak up so we can get you on tape.
Gladly. Thank you. Thank you for the time. I am Brian Johnson. We... My family and I, we moved here approximately 14 years ago through a job relocation. I've been in the finance world for the last 25 years. Our goal here is to build a long-term retirement residence for my wife and I. We've decided that we want to make Walker County our home for our future and not return back to the state of North Carolina where we're both originally from. In doing so, my family's been blessed through various avenues, and our goal is to use a great portion of these two parcels of land in some way to give back to the community, via a pumpkin patch, a wedding venue, or a corn maze. And long term, once we get the farming component of this land rezoning established, we are hopeful that maybe we can work with the agricultural department of the high school, given that we're so close and that we do have some acres. My wife and I, we are not farmers from our past. This is a new venture for us, but it gets us... It meets our dreams of being on the water, which would be there close to the city, Lake of Lafette, while also giving us some land to possibly use to give back to the community. That's our goal. We are not intending to build chicken houses or any recreational motorsports. It would be noise-inducing or a lot of commercialism in the area. But we are hopeful, if you're familiar with the area, it's on Ringo Road between Lake Howard and Round Pond Road on the back way towards the high school. It is not an aesthetically pleasing sight currently from where it was clear-cut approximately three years ago. So number one thing is we got a lot of cleaning aesthetically that would hopefully also be more appealing as people are visiting our high school for various sporting and athletic activities. Thank you.
Is there any questions or comments on this hearing, on this request, on these two rezones? Okay, thank you. Hearing none, we'll move to our next item, number three on our public hearing. Restore 634 Inc., request a conditional use of variance for property located at 236... Is it Streeler?
Streeter.
Stre... Okay, Drive, Lafette, Georgia, tax map 0-469-033. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak in opposition of this conditional use of variance request? Anyone to speak in opposition? Okay, thank you. Anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this request at this time? Okay, y'all come up and state your name for the record and help me share with us once you've got it.
My name is Donna Dean, and this is Jane.
Jane Burgess.
Burgess. We are directors of Restore 634, and we are a ministry that was started by going into the Walker County Jail. We started going in on Monday nights and doing Bible study with the ladies. But what we saw over several years of doing this ministry was that there is a high recidivism rate, which means the lady... That people go in, and they get released, and they come back in, and it's like a revolving door. So ministering to them, we saw that this was a need, and we asked the ladies. We started researching and trying to find out, why does this keep happening? Because they seemed like they wanted to change, and they wanted to make a difference. And what we found was that there, when they got released, there was rarely a safe place for them to land when they got out, and they had to have a permanent address. And they... Them having a record, oftentimes it was hard for them to get a job. And so they had a lot stacked up against them. And so we want to... From that, we have prayed, and we feel that we are being called to do this home, this ministry for them, so that we can give them a safe place to land, disciple them, mentor them, and help them get jobs to be... Instead of taking from the society, to be able to give back. $15,000 is spent a year for an inmate in Walker County Jail annually, and for one inmate, and for the state of Georgia is $21,000. Twice, we spend twice as much on an inmate as we do a student in the state of Georgia. And so we would like for that funding to be spent on children and for other things, and the ones that God's calling us to, that really want to make a difference and they want to change. We want to come alongside them and help them.
I would like to speak to how we're going to do this. We are hiring two house managers to live in the home with the ladies 24/7. They... These women will be... Will ensure that the women are adhering to our rules. There will be drug testing. We will not allow firearms or alcohol, drugs, no gambling, no cell phones, no pornography, no sexual activity, and no visitors. We will have periodic house inspections. There will be physical abuse. Verbal abuse will not be tolerated in any way. All of the women will be required to follow all federal and state laws. We will have a mandatory quiet time from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM every evening. If the lady leaves our house, she will not be allowed back in our program. They are not allowed off our property without supervision. Our intake procedure and any kind of visitation with their families will all be held off-site, so nobody will be in the home that's not supposed to be there. And that will be the women living there temporarily, the volunteers, and the staff. When we discharge someone, either willingly or unwillingly, we will first call their probation officer. They will be driven to their emergency contact home or the probation office, or even to a bus stop if necessary. In order for a woman to be admitted to our program, they will have to go through a stringent application process, interview, drug testing, a health evaluation, and a background search, and we will be evaluating their background, making sure we are not accepting any sex offenders or anybody that has been convicted of a violent crime. We'd like to have up to five to six women in there, right, initially, plus the house managers, and they will be allowed to live there three to 15 months. We will have a security system with cameras and lockable gates. We are planning to implement a new private driveway that will be our primary access, and it will go from the back line of our property down to West Oakton, and we'll just leave the Streeter access as a secondary access. Our timeline for that, we... If we gain approval tonight, we will begin as soon as possible and plan to finish by the end of the year, weather permitting and resources permitting. Outside timeline would be February. One thing we have been asked about was that in that neighborhood, the neighbors indicated to us that they didn't get good response on 911 calls, so we have talked to Sheriff Wilson about that, and he has contacted the 911 service. He says he will, as soon as we're in operation, we'll make sure all the deputies are aware of where we are. We are in the 911 database, and once we have a landline, they said it would be no problem to find us. So we think we've taken care of that problem also. So that's it.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming. Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming. Okay, it is 6:32. We will end this portion of our meeting for this public hearing, and we will take about a five or six-minute recess. If anybody needs a bathroom break, or anyone's welcome to leave or stay, and then we'll enter back into our regular meeting here in about five minutes. All right, go calls back to order. It is still September the 24th at 6:37 PM. In our agenda packet, we have the minutes from our regular scheduled meeting back on September the 12th, and then we had a public hearing that was held on September the 19th. This information is all online on our website, also there was packets out front. So, anyone that has reviewed these or have viewed the recording of this meeting or was here at these meetings, anyone have any issues or concerns or corrections with the minutes from the meeting on September the 12th? Hearing none, we'll sign these into the record. Then we have our meeting for public hearing on September the 19th, and as well as anyone see any issues or concerns with those minutes. Hearing none, we'll sign these into the record. All right, our next item on our agenda, we have a proclamation for dwarfism Awareness Month for October, so I'm going to read this. It says, "By the sole commissioner of Walker County, a proclamation, dwarfism awareness month, whereas dwarfism is considered to be a rare medical condition with over 30,000 people in the United States and more than 650,000 people in the world with this type of dwarfism, and whereas dwarfism affects bone growth, but generally does not affect cognit... cognitive..."
Cognitiv.
Cognitiv, sorry about that, "abilities, and whereas there are about 300 distinct forms of dwarfism, this medical or genetic condition usually results in the average height of 14 or shorter. About 80% of the people with dwarfism has the average height of parents and siblings, and whereas dwarfism is considered, or is recognized condition under the Federal American with Disabilities Act, and whereas people with dwarfism contribute to the strength of the economy of Georgia by being productive members of the workforce, covering all fields of professions. Therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, do hereby proclaim October as Dwarfism Awareness Month in Walker County in an effort to encourage acceptance and public awareness of the positive contributions made to our community by people with dwarfism. Signed and sealed the 24th day of September 2019 with great honor." All right, and we have a gentleman with us here tonight that is the sponsor of this proclamation, so we're going to ask you and your son to come up, and we're going to get a picture here together and get Joe to post this on our social media, and he can also send you a copy as well. So, this is Joey, right?
Yes.
Joey and Will?
Still.
Still, I'm sorry. It was something simple.
Still.
Good to see you again. Thank y'all for being here. We're going to let y'all take this with you, and maybe they'll put that in a nice frame, and y'all can keep that.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much. Proclamations are always fun to do. Always happy to do proclamations. Okay, the next item we have is the endorsement of R-2019, which is the proposed endorsement of application by Scenic Land LLC to participate in the Georgia Tourism Development and Sales Tax Rebate Program. This is just a simple resolution that the state needs. I'm not going to read this and bore you with all of it, but this copy will go to the Economic Development Commission of the Department of Community Affairs that shows that they have come and presented this publicly and that the local county government is in support of this project, and that they are going to be building a 245-room hotel, conference center, resort, golf course, dining spa, and other amenities project. So, we're very excited to have this project in Walker County. It's going to, it's going to generate a tremendous amount of sales tax revenue for the county that will help us to never, hopefully never have to raise property taxes, that's our goal. And so, we're always looking for additional sales tax opportunities, and one of the best things about this project is they are so considerate and they want to preserve as much of the natural beauty, and that's what this group's all about. I mean, when they go to the point of taking in GIS locating every tree and every rock on the property to help design their paths and trails and different things, because they want to preserve as much of the natural beauty as possible, they're very much committed to that, and that's one thing that makes this project very exciting for me, is because they are very much into preservation. They own a lot of that land, as he mentioned up there, on both sides of the browel, on both sides of the highway, and they are going to be great for Walker County. Is there any more questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll sign this into our record. Clerk will attest that. Also in our packet is the copy of the original memorandum of understanding, my mouse getting dry, that was done back in May of 2017. So, we have been working and partnering with them now for, going on almost three years, and so this has been a long journey for them, but it's been very exciting to see all their progress and everything that they've done. And as Robert indicated earlier, they've done everything they said they would do and more, because this project originally was quite a bit smaller, and it has actually grown. And with them being able to get the endorsement and the franchise agreement from Hilton is very notable as a great accomplishment. The Hilton Curio Collection has to be a very unique property. Hilton has many brands, and the Curio is one that is a special brand that has to be a minimum of a four-and-a-half-star property, and it has to be unique. So, this is going to be a top-level project, and so there's also a letter that I'll be signing here that goes to the Public Financing Authority, where they are bonding out a portion of this money. It does state in this letter that the county has no liabilities in these bonds, we're not issuing these bonds, our development authority in Walker County is not issuing these bonds, but they are issuing through, the State of Wisconsin Authority proposes to issue approximately $160 million in bonds for this project. So, they wanted us to also send them a letter letting them know that we are supportive of this, so that's the next item on our agenda, is the letter of support for Mclemore Hotel and Conference Center, so we'll sign this letter as well. Okay. Another very exciting thing that we are doing is we are actually enhancing our 401A and 457B retirement program for our employees. There are actually three plans in our local government, people that were employed prior to January 1 of 2007 are on what I refer to as the older defined pension fund, and there's about 70 active employees that are still on that program and will remain on that program. What we are enhancing and upgrading is the employees that were hired after January 1 2007, or over time have rolled over to this other plan. We are actually moving this plan to the Association of County Commissioners, and I believe it was 121 of the 159 counties, they handled their plans. So, that's real comforting to us, because this is all that they do, is Georgia governments. We've had some challenges in our current plan, because the company that's been administering our plan is in California, and just the challenges of time, of three hours delay, and the differences in culture and all, has been a real challenge for us, and so we have elected to make the enhancements to the plans, where we're making improvements to the vesting schedule, the contribution levels that the county's making, we're increasing those, because we want to maintain our good people, and we want to attract even more good employees as time moves forward. And we felt like that we also wanted to simplify the program. The other program was very confusing to understand, and sometimes we wasn't sure if we understood it, and so we wanted to make it as simple as possible and make it where anytime a new employee comes into Walker County Government, they're eligible for the retirement program on the very first day that they start. And so, that's going to be a nice enhancement to the program, and we are very excited, and so the employees will be having enrollment meetings the first week of October, and we've got several meeting dates that they'll attend, about a one-hour kind of mini seminar, them understanding more about investing and into the program and their enrollment, and also we will have a representative that will come up once a month to handle any new enrollees, and also to help anyone with their financial advice that they may be seeking, to make sure they maximize their retirement opportunities with the county. So, this first resolution is just to enact that officially, publicly, that we are changing the 401A defined contribution plan for Walker County employees, and on our 401A plan, there's a little over 300 employees that's in this plan. Any questions or comments on this? This has got all the detail of the plan options. Okay, also along with that is our 457B plan. This is primarily where the employees can contribute into their retirement. The 401A in government is limited to just the employer's contribution. The 457 allows employees to contribute out of their check into this plan, so this is also a resolution, moving that program over to the Association of County Commissioners so we can have it all under one umbrella and have one representation. Something a bit on the plan design. And again, all of these documents are on our website. If anybody wants to stay up late, read this, call me in the morning, and we'll talk about Okay. Got those items. All right, the item number six is Resolution R-2319, amending the fiscal year 2019 budget appropriation funds for postage for the election office and software for the magistrate. So, I'll read this one, it's pretty short. Resolution R-2319, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2019 budget to appropriate funds for postage for the election office and software for the magistrate court, whereas OCGA 36-81-3 provides for the county to adopt a summary line item legal level of budgetary control whereby the governing authority controls county spending, and whereas Resolution R-19-17 established the legal level of budgetary control for Walker County at the summarized objective classification level, personnel expense, operating expense, and capital outlay, whereas the elected, elections office needed, excuse me, let me start over. The election office needs to mail every registered voter in Walker County a new voter registration card, and whereas the magistrate court has a need for a new software system after the old system was compromised. Therefore, be hereby resolved, the Walker County Governing Authority real allocates $30,447.60 from the Department of the General Government Building and Plant, GL number Buildings improvement general in the amount of, and number one, $15,447.60 will go to the line item for postage, the general ledger number, department number 1400.523200.30, and $15,000 to the line item for software, general ledger, department number 2400.52130010. So, resolved and adopted the 24th day of September 2019. This is the only, the second budget amendment that we've had to make this year, which shows how hard each department and each elected official has worked to stay within their budget. These were both two line items of two things that come up that we just didn't plan for. We didn't realize that the, the election office, and I don't think they thought about it either, that they were going to need to mail every registered voter in Walker County a new voter register ID card, and the reason for that is the upcoming Board of Commissioners election that will take place next year. So, everyone needed to know what district that they've been zoned to, and so the new voters' cards will show you and give you that information, so you'll know exactly what district you're in. There will be four districts, and everyone in Walker County is registered to vote will be in one of those four districts. And so, so there wouldn't be any confusion, and to keep calls from having to go to the election office, them having to look these up individually and delay people's time, the election board made the decision to send out all new cards, which we supported and thought that was a very good, wise decision. But as you can see, that was a $15,447.60 investment to make that happen. Also, our magistrate court had to upgrade their software, and that was a $15,000 one-time cost for that software, and so we had not included that in any of our budgets, and so we needed to amend that, and they came and spoke to us about that a few months ago, and we just recently received that invoice. Is there any questions on this budget amendment? So, this still keeps our budget in balance, because we're actually moving this money from one department to these other two. So, we're not increasing our budget, we're just moving money to cover line items, and we're moving that money out of our, what's called governmental building and plant, out of our building improvements. So, we had some extra fund dollars in our building improvement line item that we could move over and cover the expenditures on these two items. Any questions? Okay, next two items, we're going to just combine these two, because these are the zoning applications. Consideration of application from the Johnsons requesting a rezone of R2 to A1 for property located at 4660 Ringo Road, Lafette, Georgia, tax map 0-33-001. From the original first meeting that the Planning Commission had, recommended for approval by the Planning Commission at the first hearing back on September 19th, there wasn't any restrictions put in place. We have received no letters or petitions against this, and there's no one that has spoke here tonight against this, so I'm going to agree and accept the approval of the Planning Commission to go ahead and approve this as submitted, to rezone both of these partials, 33-001 and 333-002, to be changed from R2 to A1. one and three 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 dash zero zero two, to be changed from R two to A one. Takes care of those two. I'm sorry, I gotta sign this, this is the second one to go to A one. Okay, next item on our agenda, item number nine, consideration of application to restore 634, Inc., requesting a conditional use variance for the property located at two thirty-six Streeter?
Streeter.
Streeter Drive, I struggle with it. Streeter Drive, Lafette, Georgia, tax map zero dash four six nine dash zero three three. Recommendation, approval with conditions by the planning commission at the first hearing back on September nineteen. And those conditions are that Restore 634, that they put in a driveway coming off of, what is it, West Oakton? Okay, and that they go back, go back before the planning commission each year for an evaluation and an update. And y'all have agreed to those conditions, correct? Y'all talked about the road. So we're going to approve this with these conditions. And I want to publicly say, I appreciate what y'all do in our community to help ladies that end up incarcerated. I know y'all have had this ministry for several years and y'all are very faithful to go over there and meet with them and minister to them and pray with them every week and I know they're very appreciative of that as well. So thank y'all for what you do with your ministry. Okay, that will adjourn our official meeting, but at all of our meetings, we do leave the floor open for anyone that would like to come forward to the podium and speak on any topics of Walker County. And we ask you that you keep it local to Walker County. We cannot fix the government in Washington, but we always like to give people the opportunity in the forum and we ask you to keep your comments limited to five minutes. We didn't used to have to do that, but we've had requests that we needed to start doing that. So we've, we've honored those requests to be respectful of everyone's time because if someone has an issue of concern that needs more than five minutes of conversation, we need to talk with them offline or at the office or set up another time and date to dive deeper into that so we don't end up spending thirty or forty minutes on one topic. So is there anyone that would like to come forward tonight and speak on any items of business in Walker County? Well, y'all have been a great group, but you've been a quiet group and that's always encouraging to see and witness, but we appreciate you being here tonight and taking part in your county government and we look forward to seeing you back at our next meeting. We are done. Thank you.
Thank you.